Good morning. Today's Thursday, March 12th, 2020. We are here for a work session. Please stand for the pledge. Jody, can you take the lead, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Before we begin, I would like to make an announcement on the COVID virus. The town of Riverhead has taken every precaution to ensure the residents of Riverhead are protected from the coronavirus, also known as COVID-19. Myself and our police chief are in constant contact with the Suffolk County of Health and our town colleagues. We are also in contact with the Beconic Bay Medical Center on a daily basis, and as of last night, there were no confirmed cases of COVID-19. There is no need to panic. Town hall is fully operational. At the present time, we are developing a plan should the need arise to work remotely. Concerning those seniors who are in the meal program, the meals have not been suspended. However, we have changed the delivery method to prepackaged take-home meals, or if the person desires, they will be provided curbside meals. Be a good neighbor, and please check on your elderly neighbors to see if they are okay or if they may need supplies. Any major developments will be posted on the town's website and communicated to our local media. We are going to stay tight with the agenda today because we need to jump into what is known as coop mode, continuity of operations, to ensure that our town will be able to provide the essential services should we need to close town hall. And in that regard, I'll ask our police chief to give us a little bit of protective measures. Yes.
Yes, just call me the Corona Police. Okay, first and foremost, as the supervisor says, we're on top of it, so we're working night and day.
Yes, together.
Together, all the time.
Don't get anything. We need each other.
Social distancing, everyone has a part, right. So what we have to do is stop the spread, is what I say. So stop the spread of germs. We went over this the other day, but for the public, obviously, everyone should know this already. Wash your hands, and that's for at least 20 seconds. Soap and water is the best way to get rid of the virus. Avoid close contact, so no shaking or kissing people or any of that stuff. Hugging people, you should really avoid contact with all people at this point in time and practice social distancing, especially if you're in that vulnerable group. People 65 and over should stay away from what we call density or, you know, a large group of people. Cover your cloth or sneeze with a tissue and throw it in a covered trash can if you can. Avoid touching your mouth, nose, and eyes during this time. I'm thinking about wearing gloves because I know I won't touch my face. Disinfect objects and surfaces, so just don't rely on the cleaning staff. We should be disinfecting and using hand gel all the time. And most importantly, if you're sick, stay home. So don't come in and infect everybody else. And as the supervisor said this morning, we have no known cases at this time in town of Riverhead, so we're in good shape that way.
Thank you. Stay well.
Will do. Yes, stay healthy. So two more things, actually. The CDC has plenty of information on their website, which is cdc.gov, and also the World Health Organization, whoa dot I N T. And they do have I N T, WHO has a thing on coping with stress during this time. So you could take a look at that, too.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you both for the information. And as you said about staying home, they did say this morning on the Today Show that particularly if you have a fever, they're asking people to stay home. And just to your point of helping each other as a community, one thing I will say about Riverhead, we always come together as a community, and certainly this is a time when we need to check on neighbors and friends and family who may be really afraid to go out and, you know, see if we can pick up something or do something for them. So thank you both for that update. And as a board, we will be working hard together to keep Riverhead safe.
Absolutely.
And remain calm. We'll get through this.
Yes.
Yes, good point.
Okay, discussion. Transit-oriented development proposed co-change? Go ahead.
Good morning.
No handshakes?
No handshakes.
Elbows?
Elbows, bum, high five, come far away. I, so in 2018, the town applied for a grant for strategic planning for the railroad street area. As you all know, that's a blighted, difficult area in town, and we've been working for many years to try to revitalize it without much success. So we went and applied for funding to the state regarding the area, and we were able to acquire a strategic planning grant, which we are in the middle of working through the project. So the project is for transit-oriented development in that area, basically to revitalize it, and we, the town board retained Nelson Pope and Voorhees, in particular Kathy Isman, to head the project, and she and I and others have been working, Jeff and...
How much was the grant?
The grant was for $25,000. The total project cost is $75,000. We were able to get an additional match from the IDA for $6,250. So the town's cost for the total project is $43,750. And I think when we get done with this project, you'll see how important it was. I mean, when we did the rezoning of the area in 2003 pursuant to the comp plan, a lot of the recommendations of that comp plan were not implemented in that DC3 district area, so that was something that Kathy picked up when doing the research, and so we're working on getting that to a place where we can get some more development there and hopefully move it forward. So I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Yeah. Hi. Okay, so as this seems like deja vu to me because we were here at the work session many times when we were working on the Brownfield Opportunity Area, but it's been a little while, and so this is sort of a spin-off from that. Next slide. Today, I am here with Taylor Garner. She's also a certified planner at Nelson Pope Voorhees. And we have been, as Dawn said, we have been doing some research, the study area. Did it skip the study area? No, next. Okay, so as Dawn said, this builds upon prior planning efforts. And the study area actually is consistent with the boundary of the Railroad Avenue urban renewal area, which extends from Suezian Avenue at the west and then further to, actually up to Roanoke on, to the east, but all north of West Main Street except for in front of where the Historical Society is. So that bridge that you see is the Court Street Bridge. The parking lot in the middle is, was the biggest success of the urban renewal area, and I'll show you in a little bit. I have some aerials from 2001, but you can go to the next slide. There's so many elements that, and I'm preaching to the choir here, I think, that this area has so many assets that are, it's prime for redevelopment. It's in a sewer district. It's close to a train station. It's in an opportunity zone. It's a federal opportunity zone, so there's major tax benefits for developers, so there would be interest. But next slide has, it has to do with being able to use capital gains for improvements that are eligible in an opportunity zone, so it spurs redevelopment in economically distressed communities. Next slide. So this has just all the little assets that are in the area, but it's close to Polish Town. It's close to downtown. It's got the train station, the Historic Society Museum, the library, the courthouse, the aquarium is with, it's not within a half a mile, but it is close enough. It's on the other end of this, of the downtown, and of course, we have the Beconic River. Everything that we've been doing is supported by the past planning efforts and up until even including the strategic parking plan that, my understanding is it's still draft, but that supports a TOD. The BOA supported a TOD. Comprehensive Plan supported development around the trade station. Of course, the urban renewal area did as well, and that goes back 30 years, if you can believe it. 1990 was 30 years ago. Next. It's, yeah. So there had, every one of these documents recognizes this area as being underutilized and suitable for redevelopment at a higher density. Next slide. So when the comp plan was, after the comp plan, the zoning that was implemented, the DC1, the blue area on this map was, is the downtown. That's where you come over on Beconic Avenue Bridge and everything in that area. There's a lot of opportunity there, and you've seen a lot of investment in the downtown. The area that was rezoned DC3, Office, is the yellow with the red hatching there, has not seen investment, and the code that was put into place does not, it's not actually consistent with the comprehensive plan, and your zoning is supposed to be consistent with your comprehensive plan, and the recommendation included apartments and mixed use. Next slide. All right, so this is 2001. All right, next slide. That's 2004. You could see not much changed between 2001 and 2004, but you could see, go back, Taylor. 2001, you could see that there were a bunch of derelict houses in the middle there. Those were, that was one of the successes of the urban renewal plan that created the parking lot, and that was an initiative to keep the Suffolk County Courthouse here and to support the growth of it, actually, because they put that addition on. Okay, next slide. So that's 2001. 2004, next slide. Is that 2000? This is 2016, sorry. I had to go ahead to 2016. Still nothing, not much has happened. The parking lot's been paved there. You could see the addition. You can go to the next slide. It actually circles the changes. So we have the courthouse addition. There was a building knockdown on Griffin for creation of that parking lot over there. A lot of parking lot improvements. And then on Suezie, there was the Butler Building that was put in. So other than that, we didn't see any investment in this area. So even though it's an opportunity zone, and that's been in place for two years.
And all but one of those changes world government-sponsored projects.
Yes, exactly.
Private investment has been completely absent.
Yeah. Okay, so the next thing is that our recommendation, so part of our work is to prepare a request for a proposal to attract a master developer for the redevelopment of the parking lot, and if they could bring in adjoining parcels, then so much the better. But as we were looking at this, we realized that that alone is not going to reinvent this area. That we need a bigger change in this area. So we're proposing that an overlay district that's coincident with the Railroad Avenue boundary, which is all now DC3, have additional benefits for parcels that are 20,000 square feet. So if you have about a half an acre, then we propose that you can get some additional density right off the bat. Because it's in an urban renewal area, the site plans are approved, have to come through the town board. So there is, there's that control there. And then we also are envisioning additional density incentives if there are community benefits, which would be sort of a special permit. And that is to help attract really special developments and to give the flexibility to the town board. So if someone comes in and wants to do something that's really incredible, then that gives a little bit of flexibility to get some community benefits that have been identified through the comp plan, through the BOA, and even the parking, strategic parking plan, and give you that flexibility to attract something great. So at this point, we see this benefit as, first of all, it's setting the stage for this master developer to come in the door. We're already working on the zoning. And it also will strengthen this year's DRI application because it shows your commitment and that, you know, you guys mean business and you want to get, you want to move forward. So that is it in a nutshell.
Have you seen the RFQ that I originally put out in 2016 and then again in January of 2018 requesting for going out for an RFP, for a developer to come and redevelop this particular lot to maybe accommodate the justice court? So if we are going to be looking at zoning, I would hope that we could have the office space or the potential for a justice court there where the town would be the tenant. Okay?
I think that works with what we...
Yeah, I think that would work well with it. Yeah?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. So I guess at this point, so next slide shows sort of the process. If the town board is on board, we're going to continue. We've been working on a draft overlay district code, and we will continue to tweak that and come back to the town board with drafts. And after that, we would have, a local law would be prepared with due SECRA. Currently, we have some traffic analysis that has been done as part of the BOA, and we are updating some of the traffic counts as we speak, so that way we can do some analysis to see if we can, this could be supported with an AGDEC and not have to do a GEIS. So, and then we go to Suffolk County Planning Commission, have a public hearing, and ultimately adopt the changes. So that's, you know, truly condensed.
And I would hope that in the draft code, you would be sensitive to the historic district in the area because you were very instrumental. We, the town hired Nelson and Pope when we did the BOA study, and we did a supplement to the state to create the downtown historic district on the National Registry. And there are so many beautiful houses on those streets that I'm concerned in that sensitive area that a lot of the potential uses in a draft code could call for the demolition of those structures. So I want you to be sensitive to that when you're drafting the code, please.
Definitely. Could you go back to the aerial?
I also just pointed out that we've been working with Barry Long on this project also because, yeah, obviously, he's doing the pattern book and he has good ideas, so in terms of, you know, design and all that, we would definitely be including that. Those...
So incorporating, incorporating what he's working on in the DC1 and the DC3?
Absolutely, absolutely. So one of the things to...
And you guys attended the meetings.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I wanted to meet Barry. He's fantastic. So to, so you don't have to worry too much. You can see how this doesn't extend all the way down to Second Street. Most of the area, I wish I had brought it. I have a public lands map. There's a lot of public lands in here. There's the school. There's the, you know, semi-public. We have the school up there. We have the Historic Society, the library, the courts, and that takes up a lot of this land and the right-of-way where the railroad is, the railroad museum. So actually, we're not talking about a tremendous number of lots. So, but absolutely, I think that, you know, when we are talking about design guidelines in the code, we would want to incorporate what Barry and his group come up with for the pattern book.
And also shared parking. Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's recommended in the parking, strategic parking plan, and so it's all kind of weaving together nicely.
Very nicely.
Yeah.
And that's what I was asking, because it sounds like all the pieces are fitting together. So you're working with UDA, and of course, we have the master plan update. All of these pieces are fitting together then.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
Yeah, it really is.
It is exciting. And yes, we are ready to move.
Okay. Thank you so much. Great effort.
Thank you very much for having us. We'll see you soon.
You'll be back.
And we'll keep, keep working. It's nice to see you.
Have a good day. All right, moving forward, Jack Orbin, Independent Audit Committee.
You didn't say anything.
Keep it brief.
Keep it brief. We're moving forward today.
We can do that.
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning. First, I want to thank you guys for your work. Your service is not, is voluntary, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Yes, point well made. Thank you. Thank you guys for your work that you do for the town.
And I got to meet the rest of the committee today, so...
We're keeping busy.
No handshakes. We're doing elbows, though, okay?
The thought counts.
Okay.
Good morning. I know everybody, including you.
Yeah.
We don't know what's, well, let me just introduce the committee again, if you don't know them. We have one member missing. We have three volunteer members of the committee, myself, Ernie Anderson, and a gentleman by the name of Joel Hockett. He is in Florida at the moment. And though this was very important, supervisor, he decided to stay there.
Okay. I'll forgive him.
As his leader, I agreed with that. I did want to just sketch out a little bit for, we haven't been together in quite some time, close to a year, as a matter of fact, where we generally got together maybe every six to nine months, as to what goes on with the Independent Audit Committee. And I know you're in a hurry, so I won't make it too long.
That's okay.
But many years ago, this town did not have an independent audit committee. The elected officials at the time considered it. There was debate about it, and a resolution was finally passed to create this committee. It's been underway since then. We've audited probably seven or eight departments since we were created. And the general protocol is that we decide mostly ourselves what department we're going to audit. Once in a while, we get a request from the town for good reasons, we feel, to go into a particular department. There have been two examples of that up to this point in time. One was the justice to court, court, when we had a new justice come into the town, and there were some issues about the previous justice and this justice signing off on things, and they felt we could be helpful. I think we were. The other was the municipal garage, which at the time did not have the current leadership that it had, and we spent quite a bit of time on it. The rest of the audits we have done usually deciding ourselves what might be most appropriate, whether it's the rec department or whatever. In this instance, going back to the summer of last year, it was suggested that we might take a look at the ambulance corps. And they said there was some reason to believe that the town and the corps it would be better if we understood more of what was going on. So we agreed to do that. Now, our general plan, when we go into a department, or in this case, what is essentially an independent entity, we get together, we talk about what we need to know before we go there. We did discuss with Riverhead's council, Dan McCormick in particular, the agreements that exist between this town and the ambulance corps. And I know most of you know all about this, but I'm just trying to set the stage. Put your hand up if you're bored. So we spent time with Dan, and these agreements are pretty straightforward, a lot of boilerplate, but it does provide for the essential relationship between the town and the ambulance corps. There are two of them. I'll get into a minute. We also talked to Bill Rothar, your finance guy, to discuss the money flows that came into the ambulance corps, coming to the town, and how that was working. So once we understood those two things, the agreements that existed and the money flows, we put together a draft plan, and we went to see the leadership of the ambulance corps. They generally only can meet at night, so we met on their premises at night, and thankfully, while we were there, there were no emergencies, so we could spend quite a bit of time together. It was an awkward meeting. I would make this general observation that at that point in time, this is the late summer, early fall of last year, I would say that the relationship between the town and the ambulance corps was not healthy. For whatever reason, there seemed to be a general level of either misunderstanding or even distrust between the two parties, perhaps because there hadn't been a lot of communication or situations built up and they weren't resolved, or whatever. It was not, it was not healthy, in my opinion. Those are my words. So we told the elected leadership, their board, what we intended to do, and they resisted a part of it. There are two agreements between the town and the ambulance corps. One is an overall agreement that provides for the funding. This is a big line item on the budget, as you well know, to do the essential job of running around the town with ambulances. And the other has to do with a very specialized part of their relationship called medical billing. And I'll get to that in a second. The ambulance corps resisted our doing an audit of the overall relationship. They claimed that they were an independent organization and the town essentially was... Are they there, here? Essentially, not permitted to come in and audit that part of the relationship.
The corporation part.
The general relation, the one that uses the funding to actually...
Right, we have a contract with them. We give them a dollar amount, and then they spend it.
That agreement that provides for that funding and what they are expected to do for it.
Got it.
I reported that back to the town authorities, elected officials at the time, that they resisted our doing an audit of that, though they agreed to do an audit of medical billing, which I'll get into in a second, and the town decided not to take issue with that. We can get into that in some more detail where you can a little bit later. And by the way, these contracts, as I'm sure you well know, are coming up this year. And in my own opinion, it's a good time to sit down with these folks, iron out any issues that exist in the contracts and solve this problem, and if there is a problem, with a new agreement that reflects both sides' points of view. So in any event, we were then just restricted to the medical billing part of the relationship, and now let me just explain that. Some of this is supposition on our part. But in the early days of the ambulance corps negotiating with the town, apparently, there was a feeling, I think this is pretty well confirmed, but any of you can confirm yourselves, that we would not bill a citizen of this town if we picked them up in an ambulance and took them to a hospital. That because they were paying their taxes, they were entitled to that kind of service. So there was no money coming from the people that were actually utilizing the service. Let me go on here a little bit. So then, it was said, well, gee, people drive into this town from some other place. They have an accident. They're hurt. We pick them up and take them to the hospital. They don't, they're not citizens of the town. Why shouldn't we bill them? Good question. So it was agreed that those types of incidents, let's just call them motor vehicle incidents, we would bill for. Okay? Now, the ambulance corps was not in a position to actually do billing. They don't have a huge staff and so forth. So the town and the corps entered into an agreement with a third-party biller over in Connecticut, one who is experienced in billing insurance companies for this type of incident. There's an actual agreement that provides for that, and there's a percentage of the money that's collected that's paid them as a fee. So what happens now is that the ambulance corps picks up someone in a motor vehicle accident, including someone that lives in this town, provides that service, fills out a whole bunch of paperwork. It goes to the staff of the ambulance corps. It then goes to Connecticut for review. The Connecticut firm is responsible for sending it to the insurance company. The Connecticut firm is responsible in the early stages for following up with the insurance company to be sure they get paid. And if any of you ever made a claim with an insurance company, it's not the most, it's not a seamless process. It takes, it's a lot of agony. Finally, they get paid. They send the money back to the ambulance corps, to a particular account that the ambulance corps has, and then the ambulance corps, by agreement with the town, is required to forward the money to the town. Now, maybe I've made that a little longer route than it is, but I haven't. It's actually more complicated. But, so that's what goes on. And it's very important, in our opinion, that this be attended to with some precision because these are funds that will offset the cost of providing this service to both the townspeople and people who are visiting it and unfortunately might have, and we can do a better job. So back to the audit committee. This is how we function. We put together, after we learn all this stuff in the early stages, an audit plan. We go back to the department, or in this case, the ambulance corps, and we present the plan. Tell them how we're going to do this, and we let them know what we need from them. If they have policies and procedures that we should be aware of, whatever protocols there are, what people are responsible for doing what, and all the rest, that sort of thing. Those meetings, incidentally, that we had... Those meetings, incidentally, that we had after we put the plan together, went very, very well. We found the ambulance corps very cooperative at all times. They had new, different leadership back then, they have since elected a new president of the corps, but it was very friendly, and their staff, as you'll discover when we go further into the audit, were very cooperative. So we tell them all of this, and then we start, and this is where Ms. Cagle and her team comes in. Ernie and I are members of the committee, but we don't go in and start pulling out files and reading files. That's Charlene's job with her team. So she actually goes with her folks, and they sit down and start following through. So the process starts when the accident happens, and forms are filled out. And I'll let Charlene tell you all about this as we go along and what we have learned from it. Final summary, it seems like there are really two lingering issues that could be, the key ones to bring a little better relationship between the town and. One has to do with the timely remittance of money from the corps to the town. The town is unhappy that the corps, ambulance corps, is not forwarding the money properly. It seems to me a fairly minor issue, but it bothers both the corps and the town. Charlene will get into this in a little bit. That's one thing. The other is, what do we do about money we can't collect? Admittedly, the third party biller, the folks in Connecticut, didn't really have a plan about how we're going to deal with somebody who doesn't pay. Understandably, perhaps because they don't really have a lot of skin in the game, there isn't anyone really saying, gee, somebody owes us a thousand dollars and it's overdue for six months, what are we doing about that? The corps agrees with that, and when we made our final presentation to them, we always go to the, in this case, the corps, and we present our plan verbally to them. And we ask them, is there anything that we came, conclusions that we reached that you disagree with, or some understanding that we had that you don't think is the correct one? There was one, and had to do with these write offs, and since we left there after we made our presentation, the ambulance corps has agreed that they need to tighten up that process. So I think we've actually closed the loop on this whole thing. So having said all that, let me have Charlene walk you through, and by the way, we don't give you our report until we leave.
Smart. Then we're skimming three and four.
So that you actually listen to us.
Listening.
And finally, since some of you are new, just, this is an urban hope. As we have audited various departments in this town, I'd like to believe, and maybe it's self-serving, that some of the things that we have learned have actually benefited the town.
Absolutely.
They've benefited the department head, they've benefited the town, the elected officials, me as a citizen, others, that somewhere and somehow, there was something that a department could do better, we uncovered it, not as a gotcha thing, but as a friendly thing, gee, why don't you try this? And so I'd like to think the same thing is true here, that when this is all done, that perhaps there's a better way to communicate between the corps and the town, and whatever issues are lingering, we can find some way to overcome. So this gets a little nitty gritty, try to pay attention, but.
And I'll try to keep, I'll try to keep it brief, thank you.
And I just want to thank you, because I've been here since we started this independent audit committee, and the departments really benefit from it also, because there was always a lot of finger pointing as to who was doing what, or where the cash box was, or how many stickers were sold at the beach, and where the money was going, and so especially the recreation department. So you've done great work over the years, and I want to thank you for your service.
And we'll continue to do so, hopefully.
Thank you.
That was non-committal.
I know.
Well, thank you, thank you, Jack. So what normally happens in the process is, my firm takes direction from the audit committee. We are given a mission, we're given, you know, hey, this is what we would like you to look at. We use our auditing standards to put together an audit plan, and what we do is figure out, what are we trying to accomplish, what are, what are the key areas we're focusing on? We write our plan according to whatever objectives we're trying to, you know, to achieve, and then we set out with how, how we're going to, you know, what kind of information we need. We provide a document list to the department that we're auditing, saying, you know, we select a period of time to look at, and then we determine what sample size is. So you, obviously you can never, when it comes to auditing and any type of internal auditing, fraud detection, anything along those lines, you really, you, there's, there's not really a practical way to review every transaction. And I think that's a misnomer. People think that when you're audited, you look at every single transaction. We develop a sample size that keeps our risk level low. So what we did was, we decided that since the contract started in, you know, mid 2017, and had gone through, it's currently, the billing contract is currently still in place, but we conducted our work last summer, so it was through July of 2019. And we determined what was the total amount of transactions and the total dollar amount that was billed in the activity. And we decided on sample size that would be appropriate, about fourteen percent. So I'll just, I'm going to read through my summary report, and then if anybody has any questions, you can stop me, I might stop and reiterate a little bit. But the overall objective was to review the ambulance corps and the conditions of the revenue recovery agreement with the town of Riverhead per resolution 288 executed on May 1st of 2017. To achieve this objective, we selected a sample of data to ensure that compliance with the terms of the contract were in place. The test of data included specifically the appropriateness and accuracy of the fee charged according to the contract, reconciling the revenue collected, and the timely recording and distribution of that revenue to the town, because that seemed to be the major bulk of what we were looking at. The scope included their medical insurance revenue for a twenty-four month period. We selected ninety transactions, we selected months. So we selected May of, May and November of 2018, and January and June of 2019. The total transactions we tested were ninety, and we flowed them from inception. We looked at the report that came from the ambulance call, all the way through to the amount that was, you know, ultimately collected and transferred to finance. And the total dollar amount we tested was eighty-eight thousand. This sample represented fourteen point seven percent of the total six hundred transactions, six hundred thirteen transactions, and the total dollar amount represented fourteen point six percent of the total amount billed of six hundred thousand. So we started looking at the standard operating procedures. We started with interviews of the staff. The billing clerk that's there, Sarah, is very, you know, she's very involved, she's very efficient, she, you know, she knows, she was an enormous help. Anything we asked for, she provided immediately, and if not, she sat with us, she was tirelessly patient with us. Every time we needed something, we kept interrupting her workday, so she was really very cooperative and very, very helpful for us. We asked for some standard operating procedures on how they were writing off old collectibles, and there, it really wasn't a written policy, and that was one of the findings and the recommendations that we're making. When we asked for billing ledger, we had items that were going back to 2017. And I think from our interview with the ambulance corps, they were, they had stated that the prior town board had decided that they did not want to pursue collection action against these individuals. If the insurance company, the auto insurance company or the car insurance paid for the transport, they would bill it, they would, you know, try to collect it. The agreement calls for Certified Ambulance Group, which is the billing company, to receive three point, three point five percent of what they collect. So what they do is, they get, the data is collected by the ambulance corps, they take only the motor vehicle accidents, and only those that are transported, because sometimes there's motor vehicle accidents, and people refuse medical treatment, et cetera, et cetera. So there are two types of levels of calls, or transports. There is a basic transport, which is nine hundred dollars, plus eighteen cents a mile, and then there is an advanced life support, which is twelve hundred dollars, and I guess that's involving.
Just, these numbers, as you probably know, come from peer group assessment around this town. So the assumption is that other communities near to Riverhead are also using these particular rates.
Yes, and Certified Ambulance Group does work with other municipalities on Long Island, too, they have the same type of agreement. At that point in time, they, the information is gathered by the ambulance corps billing clerk, she uploads it to Certified Ambulance Group, and then they have the information, you know, the person who was transported, the detail, what the patient, you know, what, the medical record of the patient, there's all kinds of HIPAA, you know, relationships there. But basically, they go up onto the website and they upload the information to Certified Ambulance Group, and the insurance information. So then Certified Ambulance Group goes after Allstate or Guygo and tries to collect on behalf of the ambulance corps. What was happening, so the policy is that they send out the bill, and then usually, there's some kind of communication from the insurance company back to CAG, saying, well, you know, we need more information about this, or this is an invalid name, or something along those lines. So there's usually some type of communication. If there's no communication, they send another bill to them, you know, they send another request for payment. And I think that's where we, the rubber meets the road, where at that point in time, if they don't hear anything, usually they hear something back from the insurance company, that it's an invalid, you know, person's name, they, you know, this isn't covered under their policy, the person's insurance was canceled. It could be a multitude of things that, the reason why, or it's an invalid policy number. So at that point in time, because they don't have the collection piece of the contract, which of course Certified Ambulance would like to have, because it goes, they actually are able to aggressively collect from the recipient or the insurance company, they actually, the percentage that they collect is much greater than that, if it goes into collections. So at this point in time, the collection is suspended. They will then send a letter to the recipient, the person who was transported, basically saying, you know, we were transported to the hospital, and here's the statement of billing that was submitted to the insurance company, and this is how much that service was provided. Some folks send in money, some folks don't, but at that point in time, there's nothing that's done. There's no, you know, further action taken. If the person doesn't pay, or the insurance company doesn't pay, you know, there's a, you know, a little bit of a follow up, and then it kind of just falls off. And so what was happening was.
There's, how many letters get sent to them before it gets?
One, one letter gets sent to the recipient. The insurance company's contacted twice.
Because I thought that we were, in the original policy that was adopted, there were three letters or three attempts to go to the person that was transported, if the insurance company wasn't paying, to try and collect it.
Well, there's three total attempts, two to the insurance company and one to the recipient. I think that's, yeah, that's the way it's working now.
I understood differently when we adopted, but it was a long time ago, so I.
I don't recall that in the agreement, I have to look back. I, that would surprise me, Jody.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that it was.
Three times, and the documents that I actually looked at, I don't recall seeing multiple letters go out for collection.
There might have been something that had changed from the discussion with the town board to the town attorney, and then going back to the ambulance, but I thought that there were going to be.
But the agreement we had had a billing procedure attached to it, and basically that was their billing procedure. They follow up with the insurance company, but they don't, they only send one bill to the, and it's actually not really a bill, it's a statement of services provided, that's what they call it, with a dollar amount on it.
Well, assumingly, they'd be reaching out to their customer anyway, so that would be three times that they would get notified by their insurance carrier.
Yeah, if you have the right name and the right address and the right phone number, and they still have the policy.
So what happens is, so the money starts trickling in, and then what will happen is Certified Ambulance will send a report and all of the checks to the ambulance corps. The ambulance corps is responsible for depositing the checks, because the checks are actually written to the ambulance corps, they're just collecting it, more like a Dropbox type of situation. The money is then deposited to the account, and that happens generally on a weekly basis, sometimes more than that, you know, when they get a chunk of money, they send it off. So there could be multiple deposits in one month. Then what will happen is, that money, once that money's available and those checks are cleared, there should be a remittance to the town. So one of the other pieces of our audit had to do with how timely, the contract basically between the town and the ambulance corps is, within fifteen days of receipt, you will remit the money to the town, you know, transfer the money to the finance department of the town. That wasn't happening for a period of time, and I'll get into those numbers a little bit. However, I guess, one of the things that I believe they had requested during our meeting was that perhaps that fifteen day period doesn't quite work, because sometimes they're using a credit union bank, and it takes a longer time for some of those out of state checks to clear, or if it's a larger amount, it'll take a little bit longer for the check to clear. Sometimes they're waiting three weeks for the check, three, you know, fifteen business days for the check to clear, and so, you know, that was becoming a little bit of a problem as well. But basically, the collectibles, when you asked for an outstanding billing report, it was this thick, it was going back to 2017, and, you know, they haven't collected anything, or have an invalid dress, address, and the name has come back, you know, the mail's come back, the person has moved, you know, there should be a policy for writing it off. When I interviewed the staff, they had basically said that, well, they were under the impression that anything older, you know, that CAG was going to submit to them a report of recommended accounts to be written off. And I think only during our audit period, there's only, there had only been one write off of a group of accounts.
Out of how many?
And I think there was, it was maybe seven thousand dollars. I have to go back to the report, it's in the report. But the percentage was, you know, there was only one time that they actually physically went and reached back to CAG and said, write off these accounts. So I think when, after we met with them, there was a little bit of misunderstanding, because CAG said, well, we send you an aging report, and anything that's older than a hundred and twenty days or whatever should be written off, you know, that's really what should be written off. So I think that the ambulance corps had decided that they were going to change their procedure, so that anything older than a year, because they have received things six months later or eight months later, there's been a lag here and there, that anything a year old would be written off at any point in time, you know, at periodic times during the year, and they would do that during their meeting.
Yeah, I think they haven't yet memorialized that in some sort of resolution, but they, they understand they need to tighten this process up.
Right. So that said, so I'm just going to go through some of the things that we did. Where are we are? So, okay, so conditions, so for the test of remittance to the town. Okay, so as far as the revenue, the billing procedure and how it's working, the standard operating procedures are being followed for the, for the collection of data, submission to CAG, the biller, and the billing of services rendered, and the remittance and collection back. So that process is working for the accounts that they are collecting. Standard operating procedures are needed to ensure that the write off of old collectibles and uncollectible balances have been adequately pursued and appropriately considered and approved by the corps management, and that remittance of the corps, back to the corps is being followed. The test of remittance to the town, for the twenty-six months that we tested, there were twenty-six electronic transfers made to CAG, so once a month, CAG gets their three point five percent of what they've collected over the last thirty days. And there were twenty-six transfers made to the town of Riverhead to the ambulance account. Of those twenty-five, four were made on a timely basis, within fifteen days. Twenty-one were made late, and thirteen were over thirty days late. There was a period of time early on in our audit period where, because we did audit that entire twenty-four month period, there were times where there were, you know, a few months in a row where there hadn't been a check and they, a transfer, and they could, basically said, you know, they forgot to go on, or whatever it was, but the money had been sitting in the ambulance, you know, billing account. There was one unidentified withdrawal that we found that had occurred in 2017. That's the other thing, we wanted to make sure that any money that was coming out of the account was coming out, you know, for the intended purpose, and it seemed that there were only, the only withdrawals that were made from the billing account were either to CAG or to the town. Except, with the exception of this one withdrawal that we saw in 2018, and it was a cash withdrawal of seventeen hundred eleven dollars and thirty-eight cents. You know, so we brought it to the attention of the billing clerk and the management, and upon further inquiry, and they provided supporting documentation, that it was a refund of a duplicate billing, so they had to send a certified check back to Allstate of this amount. So it was, and they did actually provide the copy of the certified check and the withdrawal and everything else. But then, as they were looking at it, they realized that that seventeen, the original seventeen hundred dollars was never transmitted to the town, so they transmitted that to the town in October of 2019, a little bit, like a year and a few months late, but, you know, so. One of the things that we recommend, so some of our recommendations there, we said the corps needs to adopt and follow policies and procedures regarding write offs and uncollectible accounts, and they really should have it written into their minutes and memorialized in a more formal process. The corps should include reporting to and approval of all write offs by the management of the corps. They feel, we feel like a perpetual spreadsheet of the write offs should be maintained, so that they have a record of all of the accounts written off. The town and the corps should give some consideration to sending confirmers letters to service recipients and insurance carriers to verify that the accounts and amounts deemed to write off are collectible, you know, on a period. to write off are collectible, you know, on a periodic basis. The corps themselves can just send an email or a, a letter to Allstate and say, you know, you have this claim, can you, you know, tell us why something hap- you know, confirm that it is not collectible at this point in time, just to test, you know, the process themselves. The corps treasurer should review the bank balances weekly, to see what the available balance is, and then transmit that money over to the ambulance corps. I believe that money, and I think Bill could speak to this better, goes into a reserve account, once the town receives it, for ambulance equipment. Is that correct, Bill?
Twenty percent of the collection.
Okay. And then monthly, the monthly bank reconciliations of the Riverhead Ambulance Corps should be also reviewed with the billing clerk, because she has more intimate knowledge of what should be going in and out, and so when she saw it, she was actually the one who said, hey, we never transferred that to the town, you know, that $1,700. So we think that she should be also involved in that bank rec process. Procedures for purchase of supplies, it wasn't part of the original audit, but while we were there, we were asked to expand a little bit and check out, there was some original in the contract with the ambulance corps, some purchases of equipment to set up the office here, and computer and furniture and stuff like that. And there were supposed to be, because it was done with, you know, municipal funds, that money should be purchased, you know, according to the procurement policy of the town. So there were, I guess there was some verbal discussion between the ambulance corps and finance about the fact that, you know, it is, we bought it off of a vendor who had, who was on the state contract, and, but they never provided the state contract, we asked for it, we asked the billing clerk, we got this copy of the state contract, so we know that that, we did determine that they did follow procurement policy, but as an ambulance corps, they should probably have their own procurement, procurement policy as well, so they didn't really have their own policy. So that was one of the recommendations that we made, that they should have their own written procurement policy and procedures. And the last condition, you know, the last thing that we looked at is that some of the communications, you know, the original upload of information from the billing clerk to CAG is done through a secured server. They, she logs into their website, and she uploads the information, so that's pretty secure. But any communication between them in an email, sometimes the emails are just like through the regular email server, that'll email, like, you know, we have a question about this person, could you send us this? So we did recommend that maybe they should talk to the IT department about getting some type of encryption on some of those emails, only because they do have some sensitive data, and, you know, regarding HIPAA and such, so, and that was basically the crux of the audit. Did I miss anything, Mr. Orban?
Thankfully not, because it was too long now.
Sorry.
Now, what is the follow-through?
Let me tell you what Norman-
To see that these are-
We give you this report.
Mm-hmm.
We leave, we're not in the business of managing your departments or this relationship.
Thank you.
I figured that.
And we, we take that seriously.
Right.
Obviously, we have points of view and observations, but the job now, and we've learned it, is for the town to decide what they want to do about it.
I'd like to make a couple comments.
Go ahead.
I'll take the extra one.
Yeah, for, Tim.
Maybe, Bill, can you come up, can you answer that question?
I'm asking, with the recommendations, what is our procedure for follow-through to assure that these recommendations are?
Well, we would just track the deposits that are made on a regular basis to make sure. We don't always have the detail of when they get it, and I know that was one of the things that we went through, so we'd have to have access to when the money's collected by the third party and it's put in the account, and then track that they're collected.
Copy for you.
Okay. Track that they're collected timely. And I think that was really one of the biggest problems that we had that started, so that would be the one thing that we'd have to stay on top of. We do have the 20% put away, okay? We don't, since we didn't have this, we don't have 2019's report done yet, and we don't know what that 20% is. The contract states that it's a minimum of 20%, the board decides what happens to the rest of that money. So the rest of the money that's going into fund balance because of the billings, the board has to decide if just going into free fund balance, or putting that aside for billings and equipment also. So we have to gather that information for '19, let you know how much it was in total. We've done it in accounting, we have the authority per the contract to put the 20% away. Anything more than that, we need guidance from the board to do that. Now that we have the numbers through '19, and we know that collections have been made, and we can keep on top of them being made timely, we can give the board that information.
I, I do think that there are things that, that can be done. For example, these agreements are coming up for renewal.
You need to be louder.
These agreements are being- This is the opportunity to answer your question, I think. If there are open items between the town and the ambulance corps, you're going to have to have a new agreement anyway, so it's probably a good idea to sit down now, whoever's representing the town, including the town council, and those of you here, or one of you here, and the ambulance corps, and to start to poke away at the items that are causing some difficulty. And that's how I would approach it. In the meantime, I just wanted to say, Jody, I was looking up after you asked a question about the number of times they go after people, it's a little uncertain in the agreement.
It really is, because I'm reading the agreement now and trying to find it, and I don't see it in here.
The reason it's uncertain is, it's pretty clear for someone who's insured, but for someone who is an uninsured person, just reading this-
Yeah.
And I'm pretty good about reading this stuff.
Yep.
It's not particularly clear.
And my memory isn't clear, because we were discussing it back in 2016, and that's when we had the first agreement, and I don't even see it in the agreement.
So this is one area that you could clear up when you renegotiate this thing.
Yep.
I, I would like to, since this collection business is such an issue, just read something that the corps had sent to me. It's not that long, I'll try to speak up. These are comments about sending the money to the town, and why it doesn't always work. CAG, that's the Connecticut operation, formulates and sends us, the ambulance corps, the month-end invoice showing all monies they have received during that month. This obviously cannot be done prior to the last day of the month. Remember, this is being written by the ambulance corps to defend why you don't get your money right away. This invoice is usually completed and transferred to us during the first few days of the following month. Checks are sent to us approximately weekly. Checks received during the last days in a given month will be sent during the week following the end of the month. Delivery of these checks to our post office box takes a few days to a week. I have no idea why it might take a week. It is often the 10th of the month by the time the checks arrive in our PO box. I'm picking up the checks from the PO box depends on when our part-time employees pick up the mail. This is not a daily event. This is not a comedy either, I'm just telling you what they wrote. Once received, the checks need to be reconciled, and the checks listed on the CAG invoice to make sure all checks have been received, and all check amounts agree with the amounts listed on the invoice. Makes sense, a little reconciliation. Checks have been lost in the mail. Depending on the day received and other office responsibilities, this reconciliation can take a few days to complete. After reconciliations, the checks must be deposited in our bank. Our bank advises that clearing of deposited checks usually takes two to three days, but it can take longer, especially with larger checks. Since our ambulance billing bank account is essentially emptied every month, we cannot transfer the invoice, invoice funds to the town's bank account until all the checks have cleared. Once our treasurer has determined all checks have cleared, he executes an electronic transfer from our bank account to the town's bank account. Due to our treasurer's other responsibilities, vacation and travel, there can be delays in making this transfer. These transferred funds show up on the town's bank account on either the day they were transferred, or the first banking business day after the transfer. Now, if you followed all that, you can summarize it one word. It takes a long time to reconcile, deposit checks, pick up the checks, clear the checks.
We understand, there's a need to streamline it, we got it.
Yeah, we need to, because you were saying, only four out of 26 were timely.
With what Jack mentioned about the upcoming contract, that I think what should be considered is that CAG indicates that more than 90% of all transported patients, it's collectible in there. And particularly on the, because there's Medicare Part B, that it can be covered, and also Medicaid.
You're saying we should be pursuing that.
As well as the insurer, like Allstate or Hartford. So I think if you have a meeting with them, that should be brought up, to have them explain more about collecting 90%, because if you're giving out a million dollars to the ambulance corps, a million plus, you want to collect as much as possible-
Right.
Right, for the tax-
And limit the write-offs.
That's correct.
Yes, agree.
So we have to have some system in place to limit the write-off.
And, and I think they should indicate how they come up with 90%. It's on their website, so even if you get 80% or 75, it's, when you look back, that when we did, when the order was done back in July of 2019, there was still 261,000 that wasn't collected at that time, some of it going back to 2018. So I think, instead of letting this thing, let it drag on, that the, the services, CAG, should indicate more efficiently as what, what their efforts are.
Because that's their job.
It's evident that-
I mean, they're getting, I mean, and ask them for recommendations possibly, how to increase the, the collection rate.
Yeah, I think the collection, of the $602,000, 324 was collected over the period, so that's not 90%, it's more like-
Wait, say that again?
It's in the, in the report I just, I had given you, but it actually says the billable costs from, through July 2019 totaled 16, 613 by count and $602,000 by amount billed. Collections were 324,000.
So it's, so it's-
It might have taken longer to collect.
Yeah, and so there was, currently there were insurance disallowed charges of 6,000, they had write-offs of 10,000, and the total uncollected that was not written off on their report was 261,000 as of July.
Because they were still waiting for it.
Or there, it's never gonna be, because they weren't writing them off, that's the other problem, that it's truly written to be written off. So we're not, I'm not understanding where, they can say it's 90%, but we're not collecting 90%.
But I think we deposited 740-something thousand bill in that year for ambulance billing that had gone into the account, because I, I'm trying to pull it up, what they sent me.
We had, we had 40,000 in reserve as of 12/31/18.
But that's-
So, so that means from-
Is that for the capital projects, the 10%?
That's the 20%. So that would have been close to $200,000, or $200,000 in change, I don't know if it was just under just old-
So, because we put a percentage of the money that the town collects into a capital account for future improvements to the district. So that was in the agreement, the original agreement with the ambulance corps. So there's, I'm gonna look through your report, and to my, my best recollection, and going back through the emails back and forth, and talking to Dan, and, and figure out what's going on, but it seems like there's a lot of miscommunication too, between CAG and the ambulance corps, if they're sending checks and checks are getting lost in the mail. I mean, that's like, problem number one.
Jody, I'm not here to defend CAG, but they are getting 3.2% of a fairly small number.
Mm-hmm.
I think they agreed to take this job for that meager fee, if you will, because they were hoping to get a bigger relationship with this town or whatever. It's a little hard to push them around when they're not getting paid a lot of money.
Understood.
And I have no interest in CAG, but just as a business, the amount of money that they get for what they have to do, put yourself in a chair in CAG's office, getting a claim from Riverhead, singing to the insurance company, following up on it, forgetting that you did all these things correctly, it's a huge pain in the neck. It's, it's not a pleasant business.
But, but if they got, if they come for the meeting, and you want more of a service for them, maybe they'll want more of a fee.
That's exactly what they want.
So if you get more of a fee, you might get more money back, so I would think that should be discussed with-
I recall at the time, CAG was only representing one other ambulance district, and it was a small district in Bel Air, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't-
So that was the only ambulance district that was doing billing at the time, and they wanted to take on the Riverhead account, so, and I'm sure they have several other accounts since they took on Riverhead.
I believe they do, yes.
So, I mean, but a lot of times gone by, so obviously we need to update things.
Yep.
So the major, you know, topics are the timing of the payment to the town.
Write-offs.
The write-offs and the collection, how we go, how they go about the collection.
And I think that the, the agreement with CAG required them to submit checks four times a month to the ambulance district, ambulance corps. So that might be a little burdensome also, in every single week, sending checks, maybe bi-weekly, and then having a tickler file to attach the checks to what they have collected, and getting that information to the town in a spreadsheet or-
We'll let you get on. I, I think what comes out of this is, when you sit down with them, the ambulance corps, to discuss it, these kinds of issues are the things that you should be talking about, and where they're open or unresolved, we can put our arms around them. And just finally, the ambulance corps is not unlike my committee. They're, they're volunteers. There's a different mindset of a volunteer. It's not as though you're dealing with somebody who's a paid person in an apartment of the Town of Riverhead. They do it because they want to. Now, you may not always agree with their personality or whatever, but I have a particular sympathy for people that volunteer their time, especially driving ambulances around and helping people when they're in distress. So that's not to say they can't do a better job, but it is to say that if you're volunteering your time and leaving for whatever reason, your home and so forth, to help other people, it's nice to just remember that.
Yes, certainly, we have a great respect and appreciation for our ambulance corps, and I think these things seem like things that we can, that can be tweaked and fixed.
In my view, they're not a big deal, they really aren't.
Did you want to add anything, or let us know anything else?
The ambulance corps, the attorney and I sat down with the ambulance corps about a week or so ago, because they wanted to tell us some of their concerns, and they're really the same concerns we had. They actually had asked for a 30-day, because they came up with 15 days, I think they pulled it out of a hat back when they did the contract.
And it wasn't feasible.
They had no history to know what would be doable. So they, they were asking for 30 days in that conversation, and these are the things, you know, as Jack had mentioned, we want to put in the new contract, increase it from 15 to 30 days.
Okay, so Councilwoman Giglio is the liaison, and it's, it's evident, quite evident.
When did that happen? Jim Wooton was-
So we just found out one of the things, we can better identify who's in charge.
I'm happy to do it, though. And Councilman Don, John Donleavy really led the charge on this, and it, it really is a great thing for the town, and it does put a reserve aside for capital improvements for the ambulance district. So I gotta give a shout-out to Councilman Donleavy.
I was just gonna say, a shout-out to Mr. Donleavy.
Because he was the one, and they really, there really was a lot of pushback, and he stayed reverent to it, and made sure it got done, so.
And now you're in charge, Jody.
It's evident that we have changed-
You know what they say, when you don't show up for a meeting, all of a sudden you're playing.
Obviously, there, we need to increase the protocols, and it's quite evident that there is lack of communication, and so we're gonna be working on that.
They must have requested that, I have a very good-
As a volunteer, thank you also.
If any of you have any thoughts on where we go next with our little team, let us know.
We shall. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward.
Yvette, can I just-
Thanks, Charlie.
Just two quick things.
Nice to see you, Mr. Orban.
Yeah, the other thing they did mention was the write-offs, they wanted something in writing in the contract with that.
We need a protocol.
And just for numbers sake, as of December of 19, the total billing is 369, which means we'll have 50, almost $58,000 in that reserve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, thanks for coming up.
Moving forward, proposed car wash, 1535 Main Road.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, sorry.
I enjoyed your presentation very much, thank you.
Hubbard is the ambulance liaison as of the 2020 list.
I promise you ours will be brief.
You've just got to point it.
Yes, that hasn't been certified yet, yes, that's what's on there, remember? We're adjusting it.
So that's why, I guess I haven't been notified yet, but Hubbard is on the list right now.[1721.73] right now.
Okay, and we're still waiting for the final changes? Including an email that you sent to change things around?
Yeah, Hubbard's going to take Justice Court, but I didn't know anything about ambulance, but I'm happy to do it.
Thank you, Karen.
Good morning.
Bye.
Wow, that's a big file, Karen. Is that one of your biggest files?
No. It's small.
Can I, would you like to read this into the record, please?
No, please, not today, sorry.
Frank, there's the... Do you have enough copies of this?
Sure.
Yeah?
Here's a copy, just, it's just...
All right.
It's in the packet.
Okay, I just, I have to wait for everybody to come back.
Car wash.
All right.
Morning.
Good morning. This is a repeat of our presentation that we did last year for the benefit of the board members that were not here. This is for a car wash located at Pulaski Street, Route 58. As you remember, it's where the old dilapidated barn is right now, next to the car dealership. It's a uniquely shaped property. It needs a special permit, and site plan by the planning board, special permit is obviously under your jurisdiction, and that is the only decision-making that you have on this application. This is a type-two action under SECRA, no further environmental review is required. Everything that we talked about the last time, this was end of last year, Karen prepared a two-page summary of her longer staff report. We hung up, I believe, on a number of site plan issues such as crocs, access, and drainage. Those are things that are really under the purview, I believe, and respectfully would suggest that these are purview of the planning board and not under the special permit criteria. There are special permit criteria that have been outlined in Karen's report. We believe those have been met. We have a resolution for you today that will be voted on next Tuesday at your regular meeting, and so we're here today to answer any questions you may have about the application.
I just noticed that there were four conditions down on the bottom of the second page.
Well, actually, it continues on to those.
Oh, continues, oh, I didn't even notice that.
Are you going to go over the summary?
Yeah, I can go over, I can give you more information if you like.
No, so this would be binding in their...
In their site plan, would you?
In their site plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Just to kind of give a little background, this originally was a car wash and a 75-seat restaurant and a thousand square foot of retail. And it had been originally classified as unlisted, and we had done coordinator review. They did a traffic study, they did a study of the slopes of the streets. Actually, the traffic engineering firm did that. They didn't find anything of concern, there would be no loss of service at the light. And then they actually scaled back as we had originally recommended and got rid of the restaurant and the retail. So, now it's just a car wash. It's going to be, and you can jump in if I'm incorrect, it's going to be fully automated.
What's the exact location? I'm sorry, you said Pulaski and...
It's Pulaski Street and Pulaski Street and Route 58. So, it's, if you go down Pulaski Street and you make that right on the, what we call the extension, and then you come up to the light to go into Home Depot Shopping Center, that's where it's located. There's a house there now and a barn. So, last time we had discussed the project, well, actually, it was unlisted, and we did the coordinated review. No one else wanted lead agency. They did the traffic study and the slope study, and then due to the reducing the development, now it's a type-two action because it's under 4,000 square feet of building. So, that means SECRA is done. So, actually, since the last time this was presented to the board, they've done some changes to the site plan.
But again, this is not a final site plan, you're not voting on the site plan, that's the purview of the planning board. So, we're getting into, should garbage dumps be located here, should a drywall be located there?
That's really for the planning board.
Right.
Right, the only reason I bring it up, there was some concern about the landscaping along Pulaski Street, they had a striped area, paved area, and here now it's all landscaped. There was some concern about the retaining wall on the adjacent property, which they were originally going to remove, and then they were going to take off the top blocks, and now they're not showing any changes on the adjacent property. So, I think they've tried to...
Address all of the concerns?
Address most of the concerns, right? And I think anything else can be handled by the planning board.
So, there's still some concerns, but it's not our purview.
Yeah, I think it's to approve the use, the car wash use, and I think the conditions I included in the resolution pretty much address any impact it might have on the community.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're pretty quiet today. For you.
We're done that way. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, resolutions. Devin, can you read out the resolutions, please?
It's a giant.
I know.
Thank you.
Take care. All right.
I'm just going to pull mine up. Just grab it. I'll talk to you about that later. You're wearing my favorites.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
We are ready.
So, some of the numbers are screwed up, we're having an issue with the program, so a couple of the numbers are in duplicate, so we just won't read them twice, that's all.
All right.
They have a call onto the computer program, and we're waiting on, we're fixing it.
You need to speak up?
Okay. Number one, accepts the resignation of an auto mechanic. Number two, reappoint seasonal pump-out boat operators. Number three, reappoints a seasonal water treatment plant operator. Number four, amends resolution 2020-161. Five, accepts the resignation of Fire Marshal Andrew...
Is that an amendment? Yeah, I'd like to know what that is.
Yeah, we, next time...
Yeah, let's slow down a little bit.
Yeah, when we amend, we should list the title of the resolution.
Co-compliance Coordinator.
Okay.
Catherine Sebeck.
Co-compliance.
We must've amended something.
What is being changed?
Coordinator. I think she's moving from another department.
No, but we must've changed something with the original resolution. And that's not stated in the resolution, or, and there's nothing attached, so just what's being changed.
Where's Bob? Yeah, we need Bob. Can somebody get Bob?
Will you can grab caution?
That's his department. He submitted the resolution.
All right, I guess we can get back to that one?
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
Sounds good.
Okay, number five, accepts the resignation of Fire Marshal Andrew Smith.
I know he was leaving.
Number six, authorizes the release of foundation security posted by Beconic Management Group, LLC for foundation construction of two-story medical center building on property at 1224 Osterunder Avenue, Riverhead. Number seven, extends bid for dry hydrated lime calcium hydroxide for Riverhead Water District. Number eight, East Creek budget adjustment.
Let me just see what that is. That's $10,000. Is that for the Transformers? Bill, do you want to talk about this?
East Creek budget adjustment.
The East Creek Dock.
From rental income to repairs and maintenance dock.
Is this, this is for East Creek?
Yes.
Yeah, so there is, there is a...
Except for the Transformers from PSENG?
Yep, so they only have about $8,000 in all repairs and maintenance for the year. They've already put some purchase orders in and need some for the rest of the year, so this is to repair those Transformers. They did one last year, they need to do one this year. The last two years' revenue has been about $15,000 to $20,000 higher than we've projected, so we assume the same thing's going to happen this year, I'm speaking to Ray. So, it's really the only place we can get this from, because it's a very tight budget in the East Creek docks.
And there's going to be more expenditures next year, because what they're trying to do is combine the two Transformers together rather than having them run separately, and we might save money in the long run doing that and have redundancy, so.
So, we would potentially, now that we know that, put money in the 2021 budget, so we wouldn't need to do that, we would increase the estimated revenue. One of the reasons why we didn't do it for this year is we only had one year that we collected more than we budgeted. Now, we have two years that we've collected more, so we know it's a pattern, not just a one-time thing.
Okay, great.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was for the Transformers, because I was assured they would be completed within the next two weeks, because we don't want to have upset dock.
And I think an email went around, told that we did the budget transfer, they can afford the piece now, because it's got an April something deadline.
Yeah, we did have an email.
Yes. Bob?
Yes.
Concerning Resolution...
2020-161.
161 for an amendment to the...
Co-compliance Coordinator?
Code enforcement Coordinator.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was just the delineation was incorrect. I think it said code compliance officer instead of code compliance coordinator.
Okay, so we're changing the title.
Just a minor amendment, just to correct, correct the title of the person that we're looking, the civil service title.
So, can you correct the resolution to state that the original resolution that was adopted called for a code compliance coordinator, and it needs to be a code compliance officer or whatever it is?
I'll talk to Meg, she did the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so number nine, authorize a settlement of legal action by Joan Fleishman against the town of Riverhead. Ten, assign fund balance for IT department. Eleven, authorizes the supervisor to execute lease renewal agreement authorizing the town to lease a vehicle from Suffolk County Office for the Aging for Transportation Services for elderly residents. Twelve, grants excavation exportation permit as provided by Chapter 229 to Real Life Church of Wading River, 14 Front Street, Wading River. Thirteen, approve special event, Chapter Two, approve special event, Chapter 255 application of Riverhead Foundation for Marine Research hosting paddle battle Long Island on the Beconic Riverfront Saturday, July 25, 2020. Authorizes the supervisor, fourteen, authorizes the supervisor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Superior Officers Association, Inc. Number fifteen, approves special event, Chapter 255 application of Long Island Antique Power Association Antique Tractor and Truck Show, June 6, 7, 14, and July 11 and 12, 2020. Item number sixteen, this evidently is supposed to be a CDA agenda item, so they'll amend this for the meeting. Authorizes the supervisor to execute an amendment to the license agreement with Launcher, Inc. Number seventeen, reappoints a member to the Senior Citizens Advisory Council. Number eighteen, reappoints a member to the Senior Citizens Advisory Council. Nineteen, installation of water mains and appurtenances, Water Capital Project 30137 closure. Number twenty, authorizes the supervisor execution of certification and point of contact information sheet with the Department of Navy for loaned aircrafts. Number twenty-one, authorize the supervisor to accept deed from Tara Development Corp.
What's that? Jeff still here?
I can try to go through it.
Yeah, subdivision.
When this subdivision was originally...
Come on up, so everybody can hear you, please.
All right.
Okay.
Subdivision was originally approved, there was some land that was set aside for use by the Riverhead Water District for potential well location.
Okay.
The Riverhead Water District looked into it and determined that they did not require the land, and as a result, it was, I think maybe two years ago, we agreed to reconvey it back to Tara, I think for the original cost. They went to the planning board and zoning board in order to develop it, and there's a portion, as a part of their condition of approval, there's a little sliver that needs to be dedicated to the town of Riverhead. So, this is in connection with the planning board and ZBA approvals.
Okay.
All right?
And we have the resolution there.
Yeah, they're attached, yep.
It's attached, perfect, thank you. All right, moving forward.
Twenty-two, Hotel Indigo Best Western Sewer Extension Capital Improvement Project 20024 budget adjustment. Twenty-three, approves special event, Chapter 255 application for PC Richard and Son Memorial Day BBQ Tent Sale, May 22, 2020 through May 25, 2020. Twenty-four, assign fund balance for police department. Twenty-five, authorizes Nunk Pro Tunk extension of bid for annual HVAC maintenance contract. Twenty-six, reclassifies action and grants approval of the special permit application known as 1535 Route 58 LLC on a parcel located at 1535 Old Country Road, Riverhead, also identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 60101212.6. Number twenty-seven, Pier Avenue Vault Project 30141 closure and return of funds. Twenty-eight, approves Chapter 255 special event application of Beconic Bay Medical Center Northwell Health Walk at East End, Sunday, May 17, 2020, at Tanger Outlets. Twenty-nine, accepts the retirement of a police officer. Number thirty, appoints a part-time fire prevention inspector. This is where our numbers start to go a little wonky, but I'll just say that the next one, authorizes town supervisor to execute agreement with Cummins, Inc. regarding generator service and maintenance at facilities of the Riverhead Water District. Thirty-two, authorizes town supervisor to execute agreement with Cum, okay, that's a So, next one, Railroad Avenue Urban Renewal Strategic Plan Project 72002 budget adoption. And the next one, authorizes notice of public hearing to establish fair and reasonable sewer rent for out-of-town facilities for calendar year 2020 and ratify and confirm fair and reasonable sewer rent for out-of-town facilities for calendar year 2018 and 19. And then two public hearings, six o'clock PM public hearing, the consideration of a special permit application from 48 Cromer LLC to demolish an existing building and construct a liquid propane LP facility at 48 Cromer Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-119-132.1. And authorizes notice of public hearing to establish fair and reasonable sewer rent for out-of-town facilities for calendar year 2020 and ratify and confirm fair and reasonable sewer rent for out-of-town facilities for calendar year 2018 and 19.
Great, thank you. All right. Moving forward, can I have a first and second to close open session and go into executive session?
So, Lou? Second.
To discuss the following, matter surrounding replacement of an employee, matter surrounding hiring of an employee, matter surrounding update of status of an employee, and matter surrounding driving status of an employee. Can I have a...
Wait, contractual and legal?
Oh, this one, I'm sorry. Contractual matters surrounding an IT agreement, actually, this is the second page. Legal matter, discussion of a matter surrounding pending violation at 1792 Middle Road. Can I get a first and a second, please?
You have them.
Yeah, you have them.
You have them already, right? We're waiting to the end, we'll do them beforehand.
Thank you.
As long as we have them.
Stay safe out there, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Coming. Still your...